Fire question to order, start with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, first order of business is minutes from last month's meeting. Is there any comments on last month's minutes? Hearing nothing, all in favor of accepting last month's minute that submitted?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes that's submitted.
Second. All in favor is accepting, accepting or submitting?
Aye.
Opposed? So passes. Chairman's report, town budget, I have nothing, no new information on the budget. Seems like everybody's got different pieces of budget information floating around, I have no, no new information on that, the town meeting is next week.
No, the referendum, they had, their referendum is twenty seconds.
So I have nothing, nothing else in my report. Chief McAllister's not here. It's at the FDIC, so anybody? No commentary? All right, we're gonna skip that report.
Doug? Again, for the last one, we had twenty-three calls for the month, uh, one structure fire. We have one, uh, MVA on Route Six involving a pedestrian, that was pretty, uh, involved, pretty good, uh, job with everybody. One day it says we've been getting out for every single fire call, ambulance call, emptying the fire outs, it's been amazing. We mounted the Paratex stuff in the rescue truck that we received and that, that's all done. The two new portable radios that we ordered per truck for, came in, they came in with the wrong collar mics. So I have to send the collar mics back, I don't know if there's gonna be a difference in the charge for the collar mics. But we, when I got the bill for it, it was cheaper than what we, allotted for on the capital.
That may be it.
Yeah, I'm thinking that, so when I send them, send them back and get them, the new ones. Well, I'll get to balance that bill and stuff, I just gave that to the control.
Okay.
So, and, uh, I'm gonna mount them in the truck, uh, probably tomorrow, we, we have collar mics that we borrowed, so we're going to, to put them for now. That will be in service. Other than that, everything's running great, uh, did the hose testing, that's done for, for this year. Engine one's valid for service, engine three's out currently right now. Um, all the ladders, everything, everything came back good. We lost, uh, four lengths of LDH, and we lost six lengths of inch and three quarter due to, uh, bolts. And one of them at the inch and three quarter was at the couple, so. And I believe the hose was from nineteen seventy-five, so it's almost fifty years old.
Put a warranty claim on that one.
Yeah, we got our money back out of that, yeah.
Wow, amazing.
Uh, that's the only, we're gonna probably have to replace maybe some of that inch and three quarter hose, we have enough LDH in stock. So I don't know how we're gonna go about doing that, but see if we have enough at the end of the year or where you're operating the budgets and get some, or.
What was the total count on lengths for, for both those again?
It was, um, seven lengths of inch and three quarter, and four lengths of five inch. Besides that, we have a whole bunch of, as I said before, for that fire, we have one of these guys in, uh, fire two class, that we, we want to battle. So that's for probably a good portion of halfway through that. A lot of the guys are taking their constructor two test that it took to class. So there's a lot of, a lot of classes going on, a lot of good things, and we set up a, a training with Ariel for, uh, Jason Verres, a guy from Baltimore City Department of Commerce, coming to teach your class on placement and stuff. And we're gonna be doing that in the next couple of weeks.
Nice.
That's everything, that checks for everything, amazing. That's all, yeah.
That's great, getting people out is great.
Yeah, no, I didn't actually shot that, you know, knock on wood, we haven't, haven't missed one ambulance call or, or one fire call, one first, you know, ambulance call, so, and every time you walk in there, it's pretty much, you know, ghost town, which is good in a way, but we're a lot of people showing up, so.
That's great. Any questions for Chief of other stuff? I think motionally accept his report is submitted. Like, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So passes. Moving on to unfinished, ongoing business, review of previous month's expenditures. Any fire flyers to talk about, there's a couple in depth. Firefighters EQ and Firematic. Equipment supplies. Three, three on both. Thirty-eight hundred and three thousand. Do we know what Firematic is, do we know what firefighter's EQ is? Do you know what it is? Firefighters EQ? Yes, like, Ethel power equipment? Up and bow? I'll make a note of it and ask the chief at the next meeting. A little else to move on to that, not, not for me on the box, but. She has an O for one oh five. I had two quickies on Stony Hills.
Alright.
In the firehouse maintenance, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars for overhead door. All of that.
That was, right, sorry, I got that.
Little bit, it's like a panel or something.
Two panels and they touch the track.
And then, uh, in vehicle maintenance, twenty-eight hundred dollars to gallons a night.
Uh, that was from a bill from last year. That, that missed some, missed somehow. I didn't receive it, and then I got a bill on my desk over due payment, and it was from last fiscal year.
You know, it was four.
I have no idea what it was for, it might have been for a steering lock for engine three to come up, I can research that, if I know exactly.
Just curious, I mean, I know, you see these big numbers, it's like, I, I get it. That garage door wasn't where your guys, was it?
Uh, yes, it was.
For some reason I had my mind, that was a mutual aid.
I wish it was. And that issue, it's a result, I'll tell you what, we had timers on all the garage doors, so when we leave for a fire call, the door automatically closes behind you.
Yeah.
I don't know how long it's set for. So what happened was the truck was sitting there, I go, we were going to a drill, everybody's hanging out BS and they jumped in the truck. They were waiting for somebody to get in the back, they got in the back. The new truck is higher than every other truck, they got in, they put it in drive, by the time they realized it, they were already through the door. You know, it's just one of them, so there is no more timers on them doors, if you can't remember, shut the door behind you. You should be driving further.
Yeah. You have, you have like openers in?
We have openers in all the trucks, but it was always a thing with the ambulance.
I thought it was a cool idea to have a timer on them, I guess.
And it's just an, uh.
One issue in how many years, I don't.
Well, no, we had twenty issues with the other door with the ambulance, because they would pull out and it would straddle the sensor, and the sensor's down here, so the ambulance is sitting half in, half out, and I realized the door came down, they drove off of the door, and, you know.
I know, because McCollum truck saw us on our last year, it was the best thing since it spread, we gotta have these timers and.
It's a good idea, and I, I'll agree with you, it's a good, it's a good idea in the winter time, especially if you forget the door, how much heat you're just pulling out into the thing, but with this aspect, the, the sensor's down here, the ladder's hanging four feet over the front, and you don't hit the beam before you're already through the door, so the door is gone, you're, you're you're gonna rip the door down every time it hits, you know. So it's just a simple fact, let's say you were having the sensors, hit the button, take that extra sec, second hit, but looking in the mirror, door's closed completely. Yeah, it's one of them things you gotta slow down and just think about it before we.
Well, you still have the sensors on the door, though, right? You gotta have those, that's like, that's like an ocean requirement.
Yeah, all the sensors, they're just a timer. So it costs us, uh.
That was the only question I had. Any further?
Talking about garage doors, why is there still a white car on the firehouse?
Because I guess nobody wants to paint it?
Is that what it is, it's supposed to be painted, or it's gonna come, they come colored?
If you get them colored, or if you want them.
It was like, I don't know, it's like a custom color, Danny Lacy painted those.
Bethel brown is a custom color?
It's not, they're not brown anymore, they're like maroon. I don't.
So it's just supposed to be painted?
Yeah. Hey, I know, it's been like two years.
Use all the color paint on all the chipper signs up above.
It's like a bad case of Rayo was. Alright, anything else on chief's reports? I never, sorry, expenditures, anything else? Alright, tenure capital plan. Um, I reached out to Brad since our last meeting, I said, what's the process for this, you know, you have a plan that we've we've worked off forever. Um, what's the process for this, he says, well, it needs to get recommended by the commission to be sent to the board of selectmen, to be sent to the board of finance, so that's why this is still, still in front of us after many, many months of working on it. Um, so this was sent out with the materials for the meeting, you guys have a chance to look at it. Casey and I went through the notes uh, to make sure it represents all the motions that were made during the last couple of meetings. It should be an accurate representation of what we're looking for. So I'd like to just open a discussion if there's any commentary on it, and if not, we'll vote to move it to.
I have one comment, I'll defend Bensel here, I don't understand why we have fifteen bottles for twenty-five thousand, Bensel had fifteen bottles for sixteen thousand, when I got the quote, and it's twenty-five thousand.
That's fifteen years of life, that's not the quantity of bottles.
Oh, okay.
That's its, that's its lifespan.
Oh, alright.
So I do have, uh, Chief McAllister called me, and he wasn't able to, he was gonna give it to me on Monday. Um, he has ordered the, and this is interesting because it goes back to something that was approved a long time ago, uh, through the board of finance, and Brad had talked to it in our budget meeting this year, that the SCBA's that were ordered, like in twenty-twenty-one and never delivered, they've now accepted that order, so that's moving forward. The money was previously approved, like, years ago, and Brad says it's still sitting there, so uh, the price of the packs went up as expected, and he was gonna give me the details of it, so I don't have the numbers. The price of the packs went up as expected, so he ordered those without bottles. And his plan was to then take the bottles that are on order, that we're gonna order for this count, this fiscal year, and those bottles would go into those packs, so that's how he was able to maximize the number of packs he ordered and stayed within the budget that was approved four years ago, and he wants to take the money that's now in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget towards the bottles. Well, I think we kinda discussed that, because all the, the bottle replacement plan lays out all the bottles in the inventory, without, you know, so we should be, all the air packs we buy going forward should be without air pack, without bottles, or we should adjust the replacement bottle plan, one or the other. And the price of bottles went up as well, so he was gonna adjust all that and give me all the numbers, I don't have the numbers. So. That was a dozen packs, I think he said. I think it was. That was the one that they were waiting for. Yeah, it was released. It was twelve, and it was, I think, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and then we ate into that money with something else. That money was brought down to like ninety thousand dollars, but then was gonna be replenished to meet the one twenty-five, uh, that's a murky subject, that goes back.
What, the fire department used all the money?
I think we reallocated it to something else.
Yeah, he bought, he bought, uh, used bottles out of that, didn't he?
Yeah. Oh, they got used, yeah, they got used air bottles and packs, like Canton or something. Yeah, somewhere up in Litchfield County.
So did we present the bottles to them this year, so we know when we can order them, or?
So that's, that's the motion, the motion we need to make is to move this to the board of selectmen and be presented to the board of finance. The bottles are in this, and then I would say in conjunction with that, we make a motion to then request the spending from the board of finance on the bottles. Make motion to tenure plan, maybe a fix? I'd second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you want a separate motion? Motion passes, yes. You want a separate motion to recommend the expenditure for the replacement of Stony Hills bottles? And Bethel's, Bethel has a twenty, twenty-nine, twenty-six, yeah, there's some twenty-five, twenty-six also. I was just asking if you wanted. Oh, you didn't wanna make the money, you're money guy. Well, you know, I, I I still wonder why we have like over a hundred and thirty bottles in town. Seems, it's just like, it's like a crazy number to me. I, I can't imagine.
Are they aging out of bottles?
Yeah. I'm saying, we, we, we have a hundred and thirty bottles in town. Somewhere in that general vicinity, I can't imagine any fire in Bethel, where we would go through a hundred and thirty bottles. Out of forty, forty people, it's only three bottles.
Only three.
Can't do three bottles, power your spirit. And how many people?
Forty.
Forty-four.
You, you need them for every one of the air packs, you need a spare bottle for every single effect of.
I don't know, we have too many air packs, I don't know. Don't forget those outside guys, you have two in, two out. Yeah, okay, motion got straight again. Somebody wants to make the motion, well, hold on, I just, I just wonder, that's all. I'll make a motion that we raise to the board of selectmen, board of finance expenditures for Bethel for sixteen thousand eight hundred, and Stony Hill for twenty-five thousand two hundred for SCBA bottle replacements. Uh, and that is in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, so it would be ordering now to receive when that, by the time we receive them, will be in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Think that's dangerous? What do you think? Oh, no, no, we might not even get them then. I don't, I don't, there's a problem with that, it was just that air pack that was the issue. And then we'll take, get rid of the back of it.
Did you get a second, bud?
That was a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Alright.
Thank you for working on this.
Yeah, no problem. I think probably after the season, maybe not, but at least it's out there, at least it's pretty comprehensive and it's out there. Do we? Should we request the other money that's in Bethel's twenty-five, twenty-six budget, too? They have one, they have money for turnout gear and tires on engine six.
Definitely sense. Alright. Wanna make a motion?
Sure, I'll, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the selectmen that, uh, allocate forty thousand dollars for eight sets of turnout gear for the Bethel Fire Department, and four thousand dollars for six tires for engine six for the Bethel Fire Department, to come out of the capital.
Second.
Capital.
Second then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Feel better, be back, back in the horse?
Still be honest.
It's Stony Hills, it does as well. They can make a motion, we move forward to the board of selectmen, forty thousand dollars for eight sets of turnout gear for Stony Hill out of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright. Good. We're going somewhere, I think.
What about the bottles?
We did that, I did both of them together.
Oh, okay.
Alright.
I don't have a part in the tenure plan.
Is that any part of the buildings in the tenure plan? I have, I have a building, how is there maintenance coverage?
You, you know as well as I know, it's always been a giant, it's, there's a little bit of money in the fire department's firehouse maintenance, and then there's a little bit of money in the
It's almost gonna go on the roof and look at this at the drains to see where the roof leaks, the drains are fine, but I need to look at the roof.
I mean, all the windows, I mean, I mean, every window in that building that wasn't replaced during the addition, needs to be replaced.
Right, and the mold ceiling tiles, and the drop ceiling tiles, and how do, how do we go about?
Maybe we should have somebody come in and do an analysis of the building needs and take it from there.
Or there should be a set schedule for maintaining both, you know, like, or, or at least assessing both buildings. I know their building's much newer, but it still wears.
Yeah.
So town roofing, the town.
How, how does that go about, is there a set roofing schedule that they?
Well, what we did, um, just prior to that, um, we had so town roof and do an assessment of the school building. And because we knew at some point they're gonna be coming up on our, you know, multi-year, and they did the assessment, and then, um, I believe, um, selectmen asked them to do the town buildings as well, so that document may have already been done. So you may have information about your firehouse already.
Do have some recollection of, of an assessment being done of the town buildings, but
It's some town roof.
Whatever happened with that information, whose budget, where is that, whose purvey, is that building maintenance, is that?
Probably in building maintenance, but it gets very I would say.
I would say, too.
Maybe, maybe we should, the chairman consult with the selectmen as to whether or not there's been an assessment of the fire departments and what was the result of such assessment. Should, they could make that motion.
I'll second that.
Well, they may have to send ours to the, um, the public work director, so the assessment of the dentists school, we give to the public work director, so he may have the town.
Oh, we'll go through the select first.
Everything, everything we do has to go through the select, there's oceans there.
Didn't Chris get prices on those windows that one time?
He did.
So the, the public work should have that also. You talked to Dan about.
Yeah.
Motion. Cause there should have been prices from before. As those windows were replaced with some of those.
No problem. Uh, anything, any further? Discussion on that? Tax abatement for their discussion? Any closer to a collective plan?
Just what we discussed with the points and stuff, and, uh.
Yeah, but then you had said after one of your meetings, you, you came back and it was, it was not equitable because of the, uh, the paid company taking the calls during the day and people couldn't get their numbers.
And then you clarified that with the staffing hour, right?
Okay.
Staffing hours.
Alright.
And I actually had a question, is, that was just discussed, why didn't you actually be putting that in place?
That gets moved forward, too, or anyone else a lot?
Yeah, I, I, I thought we had recommended to, recommended to the board of selectmen for consideration at this point. Uh, so, it was recommended, and then I had an appointment to come present and discuss it, and then that all blew up, then it was budget time and then it all blew up.
Well, was that the final, final thing to, to discuss the staffing hours?
Yeah, that was the last point then.
What do we do with multiple members in the same family? You make the same deal now?
I don't know if we did.
Oh, yeah, I think you're referring to the fact, currently the way it stands it, if you have, if you have like a husband and wife, both can't take the full benefit, and there's a cap on it. Right now, the maximum amount for each member's a thousand dollars, I think if you have a married couple, the maximum amount would be fifteen hundred dollars for a couple. I don't know, I mean, I, I think we have.
Is that the statute? Yeah, the statute was two thousand, but it didn't really spell.
It was, that was just to town agreement, my opinion is if you have two members. Two thousand. Max, in our, in our rebate, but you have two people, they're both putting in the hours, they should, and if their taxes are ten thousand, you should get four on their taxes. I, I tend to agree with that. I mean, it's. They meet the requirement, they meet the requirement, they should be penalized because they're married or. I rest, was that enough, towards?
Yeah, I don't disagree, I just wanna make sure it's covered when it comes up, that they said, what, what we currently have, and there's a cap on it.
Chairman should take that under advisement when he, uh, when the selection presents it. Yeah, I'm gonna go back and, and review our notes for what we had. Just to make sure. I know we talked about it, I don't think we ever solved it. Really bad, they were giving up two people to say, yeah. No, it didn't come up during our discussion, but, uh, he, you know, recollected, you know, the past, the way the current is set up, there's a, a gap within the full reimbursement. Quality quality, it's not fair to. I don't know, it's not.
Well, it's not venue rules, so we can write the rule however we like, but.
There, there's some.
Also, also about that, with some people, too.
We still have to solve that, right?
That was solved by the statute, though, right, the statute says that one time it can repair the other.
Right. So I would think the as long as we say per member, and don't slice and dice it on different home, you know, two people in the same home, I think as long as you say per member. Yeah. And if both names are on the tax bill, each one, now if only one man's on the tax bill, too bad. Makes sense? Alright. Any further discussion on that?
Alright, well, there, the, on further discussion, we talked about also if they don't, if someone didn't have the tax liability, that were they gonna get the, uh, 401K? Or?
Way in account?
Yeah, some, yeah, similar type of reimbursement.
Then we still have the open item of the, uh, just the, alright, send it. Yeah.
They're getting a lot of younger people in, just as a comment, who can't buy a house for renting, so they don't have that tax on their taxes, they have just cars.
That's getting up there, too.
Yeah, not, not that much yet, but it is getting up there.
Over the truck? Alright, anything else? New business, we actually already covered that during the, uh, discussion of the capital plan. Anything else on new business?
Are you offering that? Then I talked to you about opening a new business, or were you doing that or something else? A cap for that pickup?
Oh, bringing up another new business, that's fine.
So I, I talked to Doug about getting a purchase and a cap for the cheese pickup, for the simple fact that there's no way to mount anything in there, and with the air pack and all the equipment in there, if I put my turnout gear in there, the tonneau covers stick, so and it's only a matter of time before I'm putting on wet turnout gear, so that gear is currently in my backseat where it honestly shouldn't be sitting all the time. And it, and I just think that we just need this, I have to mount stuff in there, the air pack, block around, down the road, it's only a matter of time before we replace in that, and the tools and stuff. So I got prices on the cap. If you
We got.
Uh, fifty-one hundred dollars for a cap. Forty-one hundred and eighty dollars without some of these other options that they put on there, so I was gonna go with the, with the cheaper one of the, of the two. And I was gonna take it out of my regular, uh, operating budget and not ask for anything out of the town, uh, capital or anything.
Looks like you have room, you have room in your budgets, right?
Yeah, and the, um, equipment, not, not the apparatus and the equipment, I mean, the, uh, is there, not the.
Vehicle maintenance?
No, the, uh, equipment and.
Supplies.
Supplies.
You have thirty-two.
You have to be a thirty two grand up there.
You know, I mean, alls I could say is when we were going through debt trucks, the board of selectmen and the board of finance were like adamantly opposed to. Putting a cap on that vehicle. They specifically did not want it being set up as like a first response vehicle.
But it's not even that.
I, I'm just, I'm just saying, what we went through when we were proposing the vehicle. And a- at that point, you know, realizing that they were so opposed to it, I had submitted uh. Something to Chief Baker at the time of a regular pickup truck and how they mounted equipment and it seemed to work quite well.
Well, this would add slide out tray that's.
It had a slide out tray and then the, the S C B A was mounted flat and then when you slid it out, it tipped up. You know, so that you could.
Yeah, that's, I bet you in brackets and stuff else, fifty one hundred dollars and I'm out.
I, I'm not debating any of that with you, I'm just. Telling you what, what the board of selectmen's and the board of finances' opinion at the time was.
And I talked to Dan because I went as far as the white old dog wouldn't struck down at the town road when I was getting gas on it. Measured that cap that was on there, that would have fit on that pickup, I would have asked if I could have took that off of there, but it's not the right size. You know, and I maybe the most confused ones about, you know, just going by the user.
I think the board of finance was the one more against that.
It was totally, that, that's what it was, they were trying to save money and it, it's. It's not so much to save money, it's just trying to deorganize and trying to, you know. Number one, not have that turnout gear right behind you driving down the road, it's not.
It's a health issue.
Yeah, it's not, and you, and literally you can put stuff in there with the, the slide on trades this high, you, you have no room for. The, the tunnel cover sticks up. You want a motion to take it out of the, that attempt of equipment and supplies or?
What was the total number again?
Fifty one.
Forty one.
Forty one?
And then you, but then you gotta have money to mount the equipment, right?
Well, I'll mount the equipment myself, just like I mounted all the car type stuff, mounted all the stuff on truck four.
You, you have like.
I have stuff.
You have like an S C B A bracket and tool brackets or whatever.
I have, I have stuff.
And there's room in your budget where you don't have to get something else up or?
No. I, I, I have it.
You said color match cap or?
Color match, yeah.
I want to see a white cap going down the road. Right, red fire, but it was kind of cool people.
I'll make a motion, second. I'll make a motion, all the commissioners get vehicles. Oh, I'm sorry, that's next, that's next meeting. We don't have a badge. We'll get that too. Get the cars first. Uh make a motion that we uh. Approve Stony Hill to move forward with purchasing a cap coming out of the uh expenditure.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Been a good meeting for you so far. All right, any other new business? Public comment? Motion per adjournment. Second. All in favor?
Aye.